Our work session is called to order. We will follow the agenda as posted, beginning with item 2.01, Transformation Update. Dr. Thornton?
Good afternoon, Chairman Houston, School Board members, staff, and citizens. Agenda item 2.01, Transformation Update, will be provided by Dr. Myers Dobbs related to the staffing at the soon-to-be-open and field with students of the Academy for Discovery at Lakewood, followed by an oral update on the open campus by Mr. John Coleman. Dr. Myers Dobbs?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Dr. Houston, Ms. Doyle, Dr. Thornton, members of the board. I am going to just review quickly the PowerPoint presentation that was provided to you. All right. It's broken down by elementary, secondary, and resources. So this information shares with you what their current assignment will be at Lakewood, based on what we know at this time, well, what their assignment will be at Lakewood, what their current assignment is in the building they're at right now, what their current school is, and then over to the right you will see the average years of experience for those teachers that are transferring to Lakewood for the elementary grade levels. For secondary, same format, shows right now what their position will be at Lakewood, what their current assignment is at their current school, and again, the average years of experience. So we had 9.6 for elementary, 9.4 for secondary, and then the last slide includes the special education and resource transfers, so again, the same format, and in that you have the average of 16.4 years of experience. So we have two of those transfers, which are administrative transfers, which were noted in red. One of those is on this slide, and one of those was on the secondary and PE slide. So all of them are transfers right now except for two. We have had a couple others that have followed that that weren't captured on this because of when it was due to be submitted. So, any questions?
Not specific to this, but do you know when we'll get the demographic profile of the students, in particular, the economic diversity breakdown?
Yes, we can, we can see through that. Mr. Schmiedl is working with HR and Technology, Andrea Sikora, to get someone to assist with synergy. Right now, he doesn't have anyone. They're scheduled to be onboard July 1, but Dr. Thornton has approved for someone to come in now, so we can input all of his students and get that demographic data. That's why we don't have it right now. It wasn't asked for on the application, so we don't, we don't have it at this point. But we should have it, I would think, within the next two weeks, and we can give you that.
One of the whole ideas was to try to not only make sure that we're providing diversity from avoiding concentrations of poverty, but also make sure that we're providing equitable opportunities across the district, and just like to get a sense of that, you know, as soon as we can.
And we will go back and provide the information as to where the students came from. I think you've seen that.
Yeah, we have that. We have that.
Okay.
Good afternoon. I'm here to share with you a brief update in regard to open campus and open campus progress. As of today, we now have two graduates that have completed all necessary requirements for graduation. Both of those graduates are Norview High School graduates. We also have two additional ones that are absolutely skin tight close, one that needs to just complete a course, and one that needs to finish an SOL, and we'll have two more, we believe, very shortly. We also, at this point, have 273 half-credit courses that have been successfully completed to date, and we have 136 full-credit courses that have been successfully completed to date. And at this point, we have 28 SOL exams that have been passed by our students and still growing, and that is more than double in terms of growth since the April report that was given.
Could you say, could you repeat that last sentence?
About SOL exams?
Yeah, exactly. I just, it just went in one ear and I feel like...
We have a total of 28 SOL exams that have now been passed by our open campus students for verified credits, which is now more than double than what we had from the April report out that we gave to the board at that time.
First of all, I apologize for being late, but what were the goals that were started off with, with open campus with the incoming students? Was there a goal to have a certain number of graduates, and if there wasn't a goal for this particular, because it was the inaugural year, is there going to be a goal for next year?
It's hard to set a goal, you know, in terms of, you know, the number of graduates per year. You know, it's based on, you know, who comes in, and, you know, at what time they come in, and when they do come in, how many courses they already have. So this year, when we, when we did our first inaugural group coming in, we had kids that ranged everywhere from, you know, zero credits to, you know, some being sophomore, some being junior, and some being senior status. Those that are in the senior status, our goal was to get them through that senior status, and juniors up to seniors and so on. So, you know, we've created goals along the way. However, open campus, you know, has, has been fluid in that we've lost students that have originally enrolled, and we've gained others back in. So, you know, as, as students enroll, goals are set individually, and then, you know, we, we work to try to reach, you know, those outcomes based on that.
Well, since we're paying for the program with Bridge Cave Academy, are the students that are enrolled in the program, are we getting the type of return on investment that we're putting in for the students that are completing the program? So are we, are we, if a student enters and drops out, and another person takes his place, is that still considered a one spot, which is what we're paying for?
Yes.
Okay. And then, if we have, let's say, 50 kids that enter who are at a certain percentage of becoming a graduate, do we keep track of that? To say they've attained graduate status, or they haven't attained graduate status, just so that we can get a measure of how successful the curriculum is with keeping kids on track and graduating them, because that's the purpose of the program?
We're keeping track of every student individually, in terms of when they come in, what, that's their baseline. And then we are tracking them by modules within courses, you know, as they complete. We're tracking them by course, and then we track them by what their completion needs to be in terms of their sequences, because some students come in needing CTE requirements, some come in needing verified credit. So, you know, we track them based on what they need. So we, we have a transcript analysis that takes place for every student when they enroll. A plan is then put in place in terms of what they need and what's the sequence they should take those courses, and then we work with them to try to get them to that outcome, and that's the goal.
Is program going to be run through the summer?
We are going to have a, a summer program that will mirror pretty close to what the district summer school plan is. We're going to downsize it just a little bit. We'll have two teachers there, and then those students that are still in courses will be able to continue through.
Is there ever consideration for a mile and no expense and everything is to continue on a year-round basis, so that we could pick up students as they...
If, if we can build that into the budget one day, yes, we would like to do that. Quite frankly, the, the summer program is coming out of my budget. So, you know, we have found a way to be able to continue it for this summer on a limited basis through our, our own funding, but if we want to keep it full scale and look at it, you know, year-round, we would have to come back to the board and look at it from a different budget standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
That was my exact question. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Thornton?
It's also important to note to the board that at the conclusion of this year, the program will undergo an independent evaluation, just to determine how we were able to achieve the goals. Old Domain University is conducting that for us as a, as a vendor, so we expect to get those results possibly mid to late summer, and then we will share that with the board as appropriate.
Dr. Stewart, and then Mr. Jordan.
I'm seeking a very positive response, and it's to your overall evaluation, knowing that there's going to be a formal evaluation. This is an informal comment, and I'm hoping that you will say wonderful things like, I can imagine you would say, but given your background, I know you inherited this as an assignment, and it's wonderful that you assumed that role. Given your background in successful locations in secondary schools before, would you use the word excellent, wonderful, fine, successful? Give me a one word, or one sentence, or one phrase description of how you feel about open campus right now. And again, this is certainly, since it's being recorded, it can't be off the record, but I would love to hear your encouraging statements about just how things have gone.
You know, it's hard to pick one word that describes it...
Then use a phrase or a sentence.
But I have been very pleased with the progress that is made in essentially less than one year of the program being up and running. We've, we've had to go through, you know, a lot of different adjustments in terms of knowing how to make it work, but it is working, and we believe that, you know, it's, it's a very positive influence on the students that we have. I do believe we can get better, but I also am very pleased with the progress, you know, that has been made this year, and I expect that to continue at leaps and bounds.
Just so that you know, I knew, knew that you'd say something good. I'm so excited about the possibilities. I'm excited by the progress this year, and again, thanks for venturing into that positive response.
The option is simply ask in light of Dr. Gabriel's questions earlier, if we're going to have this independent evaluation, I'm sure they're going to evaluate against something, and so maybe if we can get a sense of what it is that they're going to evaluate against, then that'll help us to, as a board, to understand how we want to track progress moving forward.
Right. At this point, they've conducted interviews with staff and with students. They've looked at, you know, data through the course of the year, and right now, they're waiting for end-of-year data, and then that will become part of their report as well.
This is another bright spot in Norfolk Public Schools, and I, I look forward to getting the end-of-the-year data and the, and the independent review, so it can get out to the community and the media that this is a, because this is, remember, this is groundbreaking. There's nothing like this in, in the Commonwealth, and this can be a model for other, other communities that have similar situations as ours, and it's great to be a trailblazer, and I think we should trumpet that whenever we can.
Good. Item 2.02, Academic Affairs. Dr. Thornton?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Houston. Title I, An Update on Title I Application Process for the Upcoming Academic Year. Ms. Kempson? Ms. Kempson passes out an updated version of the presentation. I'll just go back and share with the board and our viewers that there's a feature story running now on NPS Now of the open campus where interviews were done with the program coordinators. So if you have an opportunity to view that, it'll give you a little more information about what's going on with the open campus.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Dr. Houston, members of the board, Dr. Thornton.
Please share.
We're sharing too.
Yes, sir.
Janelle is posting on board docs now as we speak. So while she's doing that, you're getting a copy of the PowerPoint coming around at this point. Last meeting, the board asked for an update on where we were with the application process for our 2015, 2016 school year for the Title I, and so that's basically what we're going to go over today. You'll have an overview of where we are and where we're heading. Could do a little tap dance. I could have saved myself. Thank you. All right. So beginning with a look at the preliminary amount of money that we are hoping to receive for CH 116, which was, and I should be doing a tap dance, $13,500,000. And this is an estimate, and it's preliminary. We had, in fact, the first one that went in was a little bit more, but we needed to take off because the state takes back some set-aside money, some school improvement money. But we're estimating, based on the preliminary amounts we're getting from the state, that we will have around this amount. It'll, it's pretty fluid, but this will be in the ballpark of where we'll be. So if we go to the next slide, or the next one that you're looking at, this is kind of the, the timeline that we've been following. As you know, our goal this year was to make sure that we got things in in a more timely manner very quickly. So May 1, our schools submitted their plans and their budgets, then we did, I'll kind of read it since no one is able to see it. The, May 29, the division application was completed. We, we're now going back and doing some revisions to that application based on the, the change in funding. We're, we presented the, the information to the cabinet yesterday and discussed what we were doing, and then now, today, we're sharing it with the board, with our hope of having our application in by around the middle of June. The deadline is July 1, so we have until then to do it, but we have a goal of trying to get in things early so that we don't get caught in the backlog of all the other districts all dumping theirs in at the same time, because not everything in an application gets approved, and sometimes it gets kicked back, and then we get into delays. We're also working very hard with the State Department to check the things before we just send them up there, giving them a telephone call and saying, what about this, or would this be a possibility, to make sure that we're always staying in compliance with what they want. Okay, on the next slide, you'll see, and we've said this before, but these are, oh, I think maybe we're coming up to it? Yay! Oh, that's not us. So while we're doing that, can I ask you from the first slide, welcome aboard Norview Middle School? Oh, I skipped right over it. See, I'm thrown off by not being able, here I was given extra remediation, being able to use this correctly this week by our superintendent, and then I was all set with that. Yes, Norview Middle School is coming aboard. We are very excited to add a new school to the Title I family, and this is recent information as part of all these changes. So that's why we're making some adjustments to our application, because basically it was pretty much done, but now we're having to make adjustments. But we're excited to bring them to the Title I family. All right, so moving back to, maybe we're almost there. Or not?
You can do it from the copy, it's okay.
Okay, I'm going to continue from the copy. All right, the next slide reminds everyone of what the instructional focus will be in Norfolk Public Schools next year, and that focus will be total implementation of response to intervention. And taken out of that, parts of that that we're particularly focusing on, in addition to totally implementing it in all of our schools, is we're focusing on differentiation of instruction, because we all know that our children have different needs, learn in different ways at different levels, and therefore, we want to be sure we differentiate. Response to intervention is really going to help us with that, because it is, and you're all familiar with it, because the cycle for results was a form of response to intervention, is the tier, the way you tier your programs for, for instruction and for intervention for students. So, and, and then power lesson planning, we're really working on increasing the components of the lesson plan, so that we have key components that we're requiring for all of our lesson plans, to be sure that all of the best practices are being used every day in every lesson. We move on to the next slide.
Can I ask a question about that? We won't wait till the end of the presentation. Go ahead, it's okay. Speaking of the lesson planning process, how user-friendly is this? That's my, that's, that's a big concern.
And you know what? It was a big concern for me too, because I was an elementary school principal, and there was a lot of work putting the lesson plans in school net, and that requirement no longer exists. The teachers will be given templates that they can pop right into their computers and type it right into the template. It's a lot of work, and that was a lot of work. The, the, the secondary schools were pretty comfortable with the instrument, because they don't have a lot of preparations, but elementary schools where you're preparing three reading group lessons, a couple math group lessons, a science lesson, a social studies lesson, a writing lesson, it was a lot of going in and out, and so I met with principals, actually, the principals were very active participants in the development of the new lesson plan, and then it was vetted through a teacher team. So we're feeling very comfortable that we've really lowered the burden, and I know that was a big goal of the school board, was to lower the burden of, of that time, and so we've really worked very hard to make that happen for our teachers. Okay, program goals. Oh, thank you. Yay! I could actually read that without my glasses. Okay, so we have the, these are the goals that will be going to the Title I office at the State Department as part of our application, and as we'll go through these, you'll see that we've really tied them as closely as we could into the three instructional goals, so that everything is going to really start being integrated. The Leadership Institute for Administrators this summer will focus on those three areas, as will the development of professional development throughout the year across the board, so that everything is really connected. So Goal 1, and this is what I've just told you, is that we'll be fully implementing response to intervention, and it ties in with the End of Star, which is the school improvement, where our school improvement plans are located, and these are the numbers of these particular goals in, in End of Star, which are the TAOs 1, 2, and 3, which are another response to intervention program. Goal 2, we're going to be looking at the proficiency gap groups. I have those on the next page, so you can be reminded what, what those groups include, and they will be, and if they're scoring below grade level, or they come up in intensive urgent rage on the Star reading and math, Star reading and math test will be given to all second through eighth graders as a screening tool three times a year, then our goal for them is that they will improve by two years, which is what we call rapid improvement. We need to have those children, if you're this low, if you're scoring below grade level or you're coming way down here after, after the, taking the test, then you can't just make average growth, because you stay behind. If you're two years behind and you make a years, you go into third grade reading on a first grade level, you only make a year's growth, then you go into fourth grade reading on a second grade level, you're still behind. So rapid improvement, but if you gain two years the first year, and then you gain two years the next year, then we're going to catch you up. So that's our goal, and it's a very ambitious goal, but that's what goals are. They're, they're reaching for the stars, and that's what we're doing in Norfolk Public Schools, we're reaching for the stars.
I do have a question. A real brief one. Maybe the answer may not be brief, but how do you do that? I mean, the kids are already two years behind. How do you catch them up two years in one year?
Well, that's what response to intervention does. That tiers, so that if everyone gets, let's say it's reading at the elementary level. All the students get a guided reading, they all get a whole group lesson from the teacher. Then they're divided into three reading groups in the classroom. Every single, and, and they rotate through the teacher, so during guided reading time, you have an hour and a half, three 30-minute sessions, and so each of those groups get a baseline core tier-one lesson from the teacher as they rotate through. And when they finish their rotation, they go in and they do reinforcement activities that are directly related to the instruction they received, and then the third half hour, they have that time to go to the media center, to do their independent reading, to work on partner projects and whatever. They're like, it's direct instruction, reinforcement, independent work. For the students that are behind, when they leave their, their core instruction with the teacher, instead of going off and working independently on reinforcement, they meet with an interventionist and have a second lesson of the day, so they're taught twice instead of just once. For the kids that are really behind during the independent time, they may even go to a third lesson, so that they're getting two or three lessons in reading every single day rather than the regular one lesson, and that's what we do to accelerate. And when, the same thing with math. Math isn't, it's not as easily planned, because it doesn't have those set open blocks, but you take the math, at the elementary level, we usually have an hour and 15 minutes, and you've got an hour, a half an hour or so of direct instruction, and then they divide into groups there, and some of those groups are working with partners or independently because they're able to do it, and then the low-performing students get another small group lesson from the teacher or from an interventionist.
Oh.
So it was longer.
No, it was a great answer, and thank you very much. It gives me better clarity on, on the process. What is the success rate of that, of that model?
Well, that's something we will start tracking this next year across the district as we look at...
So this is a brand-new, this is something brand-new to us, or...
No, it's not brand-new to us. I think that what we usually have done, some schools are already doing an extra assessment to look at what happens after, they have the first assessment, and they have, they, they have core instruction, and they get an assessment, and then they have, some kids get intervention, and the kids who get intervention get a second assessment. So we've, so many of our schools have been doing that. Now we're going to have the option to take that district-wide, so that the second assessment would be an option that, that, that will, that at the district level, we'll make available for our students and for our schools.
Thank you.
And so we're, and then we're going to see. But in the schools that it's used in, and it's, and it's part of response to intervention, what they call progress monitoring, where you're constantly getting little mini checks along the way to see how the kids are doing, whereas that first one, the Star, we're only doing that three times a year, because we're looking at overall growth. But those little mini checks are looking at how they did. This month, we taught this particular skill, how did they do? Oh, they didn't make it? All right, let's give them a chance to have some extra instruction, and let's check them again.
Mr. Chairman, did you, is it proper for us to just wait for the presentation, or did you, are we free to ask questions throughout?
Mm-hmm, I'm fine.
Do you have a question, ma'am?
Yeah, I had some questions further back. One is, in terms of the timeline that we have here for application submission, has, has Norfolk Public Schools ever submitted their application to the state ahead of time for review before it was actually due, so that they could look at these things and then kick it back to us?
You know, I'm not sure. This is my first year, you know, overseeing the program, but that was, we had TA, training from the State Department, and when they came in, that was one of the recommendations that they made to us back in the springtime. We, we asked for some additional training, and one of their suggestions was try and get it in early, so that we could have it reviewed. If there's anything that needs to be done, redone, which is often the case, then they let us know right away, that we're not caught in a backlog of all the districts. So that was why...
So that two-week period that you will have will give you enough time for them to do that, throw it back to us, and then we send it back to them?
Once we submit it, then it will be our official submission, but we would be, the goal is that we would be ahead of the line, if you will, in the submission process, and once they do their official review, then we would get the feedback much sooner. But they wouldn't necessarily be giving us a preview assessment of our application. It wouldn't be a pre-application review. Once we submit it, it's our official submission, but the idea is that the sooner we can get it in for that official review, the sooner we can get feedback for any potential amendments or adjustments we may need to make to it.
And then the sooner the money starts flowing in.
You recall, most recently, when we submitted on July 1, then there were several iterations of it that had to be adjusted, and it dragged out into late, early winter. So what we're trying to do now, we had some technical assistance up front as we prepare it, where we can ask some questions. Of course, we've got Ms. Fissner here, who is, has an extensive background in Title I from a programming side. She's been able to work closely along with Lauren, with representatives from the Title I office up in Richmond, to kind of ask some questions around, well, what if we did this? What kind of language should we put here? So in that respect, we're getting some help up front, some assistance, but once we submit it, then that's our official submission, but the idea again is that we would get feedback on the official application and plan much quicker. We're hopeful that the work that we're doing up front will minimize or mitigate the need for any significant revisions after the July 1 date.
Thank you.
Okay. Goal 3. All right, and so those were our first two overall academic goals. We also, as you know, are heavily involved in our preschool program. Our preschool, our pre-K 3 program is totally funded with title money, and our pre-K 4 program, the coordinators and the specialists are funded with title money, so we need to have goals for those. And so at the end of the year, we expect to have 100% of our pre-K 3 students meet the benchmark on the spring WE CAN assessment, which is the one our three-year-olds take, and 100% of our pre-K 4 students making the benchmark on the spring PALS assessments. Once again, lofty goals, but our expectation is that we can, high expectations get high results. And then this one adri- And then this one addresses parents, our parent involvement, which is a key part of both Title I and Norfolk Public Schools. And there we are looking at a hundred percent of our Title I schools will demonstrate a ten percent increase in parent involvement. And the evidence will use their parent meeting sign-in sheets, conference attendance, and the volunteer logs. In addition, we're also overseeing, from this department, Title I Part D, which has to do with delinquency. And so our hope is that ninety percent of our students that go through the Net Academy will show progress. When they walk in, they're given the reading and math Star. They're in for different times, you know, short periods, longer periods. So hard to say exactly how much we want them to grow, but we expect them to have progress from the time they walk in the door until they leave, because they will be receiving instruction at Net Academy from Norfolk Public Schools.
While we're on the topic of the goals, my hope is that we are able to achieve all of these goals and not much more. However, next year, around this time, when we are discussing the goals again, I would ask that we revisit them, and if we haven't met them, we have baseline data to look at where we need to be and how we need to get there. Because it seems that even though they're, they're lofty and we may not achieve them, we still need to know what progress we've made. And I'm sure that there will be progress made. So I would just like to, again, reiterate how important it is to follow and track our data, and then revisit it to know what the next steps are going to be.
And that's why we selected these particular data points, because they're all part of universal screening, which is that three times a year. We know that we'll be collecting this in the fall, we'll do it again at mid-year, which you'll get a report mid-year, and then we'll do it again at the end of the year. So we actually made, made sure that we chose data points that we knew we had and were already set in place to be used.
Right.
And we will also, at that time, be able to give you why we think we had a, why if we didn't, well, why we made the goal.
Right.
But just in case, what else we would be doing differently, based on the fact if we didn't meet a goal that we set, because we think our goals are lofty but reasonable.
So explain to me how those, the goals, the, the meeting of these goals impact Title I funding? In other words, does, if you fail to meet the goals, does that impact your funding at all?
You know, I'm going to give that to Jamie. My, my feeling is, if you're, if you're a low-achieving school, it can impact. But not meeting every single goal, why don't we? Yeah, sure, come on up, they need to get to know you anyway. Let's bring her up.
Hello.
Hello.
The goals themselves, the failure to meet the goal, if that were to happen, would not reduce our funding at all. The point of these measurable objectives are to show the state how we're taking the money, and how we're aligning it with some of our division objectives and goals and initiatives, as well as allowing us to track the effectiveness of how we're using the money. So that if we come back and we note that we're not making that progress, how are we going to realign how we're using our money, so that we are more effective and efficient?
And we need to know that, whether there's a Title I or not.
We're talking about a nearly fourteen million dollar program, so we thought it was important, as Ms. Fissner said, that we internally, as we share with the board, that we have measurable goals that this funding is intended to support. Again, we can determine if we've achieved those goals to whatever extent, and then if we have to next year in planning, do we need to set different goals? So the idea is that it would not just be money that's available to spend, but it's focused, it's goal-driven, and then it's intended to impact student achievement, immediate and, and long-term.
Where are the Part B and Part C of these goals here?
Part B and Part C are in, in different.
Title I Part C is migrant.
Right.
We don't have that here at Norfolk Public Schools, and Title I Part B, I'm not sure if that's.
Is that EFL?
No, that's Title III. I don't think Title I Part B is a thing.
Good.
They just kind of skipped over that letter. Okay. All right, staffing, I thought you might want to see where the money will be going. This is at the division level, this is the Title I office, this is the staffing that is in that office. There are about, what, thirteen positions, I think, there, in that office?
And again, this is preliminary.
Yes.
But the idea is that there are some central office-related positions, but the majority of those positions have a direct impact, will have a direct impact and interaction with day-to-day instruction and supporting day-to-day instruction.
Right.
So we're trying not to build a central office administration through Title I, but we do know that these positions should be directly impacting classroom instruction on a daily basis, or at least supporting teachers who are impacting classroom instruction. And I know that we're moving along here, so the next slide. Yep.
All right, this is the staffing, and this is very preliminary, because we haven't got the exact numbers to have, but to let you see, this is, if you looked at this and you saw thirteen positions, now look at where the money is. It's in our schools. And this is, well, we know, this is an estimate, and that's why they're plus a sale, there'll be more, because of the funding's up a little bit. But just to give you an idea of how much staffing is done through Title I to support instruction. And then, of course, we have the early childhood support, and you can see, and this, of course, is because we actually pay for the entire program here. Here, we're using the VIP funds for the teachers and the paraprofessionals. And then Camp Young, we also offer some support for our Camp Young program, and it's all staffing. And that's about it? Any more questions?
Dr. Thornton, I hope before this time next year, along with Ms. Campson and her academic colleagues, to see a headline that says, "More time makes a difference." Certainly with Slide 10 and the staffing, we know the reason why that's important, is it's more time during the day. We also know by the ten percent increase in parental involvement, it will be curriculum-relevant parental involvement. Therefore, after-school, Saturday school, and summer schools will have more involvement. So I look forward to the headline where you can, through your Old Dominion evaluations or whatever, identify that more time, Saturday school, summer school, after-school, makes a difference, and I look forward to that headline.
Thank you. You will.
Northview Middle School coming on board. That's a decision that we're making?
Actually, Northview Middle School's free reduced lunch rates, which is our measure of poverty, exceeded seventy-five percent, and so they automatically come on board. They went up just that little bit, that tipped them over.
Okay.
But we're excited to have them aboard.
So they, they unfortunately get added to the family, based upon the demographics, but the, I guess, based upon the amount of funding that we're going to receive in CH-116 versus maybe some other years, it just, it means more money is being spread across more schools, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Then for the, for the program goals, just some things for consideration. If I understand the presentation correctly, some of these data points, are we saying we don't do now? So you couldn't compare, you couldn't give us how students performed with?
We could give you the data on PALS, we've been doing that for years. Star, we started implementing this year.
I remember you saying.
Right, but not all of our, and then we're working at the elementary, we started with the Osti schools, and the other schools came on board, we have their end-of-the-year results for all of them. Well, we will, they're, they're testing now. But next year, all students, grades two through eight, will be taking the Star reading and Star math, so we will have the baseline then, and we'll be able to track it, you know, twice a year with the mid-year and with the end of the year.
But with the, with the schools or the students that have been undergoing Star, you could give us some sense of how they did for comparison to what the goal is moving forward?
Certainly for the Osti dis, Osti cluster, we would be able to give you those, just so you could get a, that would give you a feel for it. Dr. Bailey, with that, that's something we could do. Yes?
With Goal Four, the parent-teacher conference attendance seems great. I don't know if there are other indicators that you can consider beyond sign-in sheets and volunteer logs, I mean, in the, I know in the old days, the assumption was that the, that Title I parents had time available and they could come and volunteer, but we know as the poverty across the country is growing, a lot of those are working families. And so I didn't know if there may be some other indicators in addition to those that you have that could be considered for qualitative parental involvement.
We would be more than happy to do that, and certainly any suggestions you have. And plus, we'll talk about it and see if we can find some additional indicators to put in there.
And then the last for the Net Academy one, I'm not, I know you mentioned that the students don't stay there that long, well, I guess depending upon the situation. But the goal just says, "We'll show progress." So I don't know if there's some way of having something a little more concrete than that, than just, "We'll show progress."
We actually struggled with that, and I actually questioned that too, because I said, because usually when you write a goal, you need to say exactly from this point to this point. That's what the rest of them do, they say from September to June, this is, we'll have this much growth would be our expectation. But it's very, it's a very fluid population that flows through there, and so we want to make sure we see some progress, and that's why we have the Star there. But it would be hard to say they're going to have a month's progress, or they're going to have six months' progress, and they're only there two weeks. So it's hard to.
So is Net Academy the only program that qualifies for that, and that's why we're focusing there, or is it?
Currently, that's where the, the money goes, is to, to the Net Academy. It's certainly something that can be opened up and explored further if there were other areas or other programs or facilities.
And then my last question, I know we said that the staffing is preliminary at the school level, when will we be in a position to get a final count there?
Once we have, we're going to operate on that funding amount right now, and then we'll run, we'll, we, actually, we just got the update on the, on the amount today. We have been operating on a higher amount yesterday.
Yeah.
So it's kind of fluid, so what we'll do now, we have to run that amount through all of the formulas, in terms of what each school's PPE or per pupil expenditure is, and then determine what amount of funding is available for each school, and then within that, how much each school will have to, to address their staffing needs at their schools. We expect at this point that there will be no school whose funding will not allow them to at least maintain their current Title I-funded staffing. Our very first iteration was assuming that we would operate with a reduction, so of course, schools were building plans that would have forced them to reduce staffing compared to this year, but at least we know now that the amount that we're planning around now will allow, at least maintain same level, bring Northview Middle on board, and then perhaps for some schools who need is even more intensified, they may have an opportunity to add some additional staff, whether it be part-time for more time, or perhaps, perhaps, maybe full-time positions. But that's why at this point it's preliminary. But we hope that will be settled, at least within the next month or so, at least on what our planning number's going to be. Then, and, and it's important to note that the additional funding is great, then the challenge becomes, if we can afford additional staff, is finding those highly qualified and effective staff, which can drive our challenge to spend, to expend the money in a timely manner, because if we add, if we're able to add more positions, but the supply and demand, the demand is greater than the supply of highly qualified and effective, then here we are in September, October, with vacant positions. And perhaps the supply for highly qualified and effective are not there, so then we've got to rework the plan and try to figure out how we can get the, the, the most significant impact at that time of the year. So more money is great, but the supply and demand is always a challenge.
Let me make note here, we are, we've already used the 2.03's time, so let's be mindful of that as we continue. Yes, Reverend Hager?
Just a couple of questions.
I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead. Ms. Robinson.
I, the, the goal of ten percent increased parental involvement, I think, is, is too low. And my suggestion would be to revisit the idea of the compacts to, because, just because you're in the PTA or you volunteer at the school, doesn't necessarily mean you're engaged. Parent engagement is having the child up and ready to go to school on time, dressed, and, and if the, and is willing to work with the school. And I think the parent compacts can, can be utilized to reinforce that idea that be a parent and take care of your child, and I think that would be very beneficial in raising that parental involvement.
Okay.
Just wanted to know, what was the, could you refresh my memory as to what the amount of Title I funding was for the 2014, 2015 school year?
A little over twelve million.
Twelve million?
It was twelve, was it twelve point one?
Twelve point four.
Twelve point four. And it was twelve point six in CH-114.
And at one point, it was seventeen million dollars. So the funding can fluctuate, again, not to belabor the point, but we add more staff to create more time, to create more tier-two, tier-three. But then if the funding, if the funding goes down next year, then we've hired staff, so then we have a challenge of sustaining those efforts. But we're going to try to maximize this year, and it's a year-to-year funding situation that we won't know until this time next year.
I also looked at the goals for Net Academy. I was wondering how you came up with a ninety percent. I, I know how fluid that population is there, and so I was wondering, to me, that seems to be a pretty high goal for such a fluid population. As you know, a student can come there, in fact, most of them come there, only there for just a few days, so I'm just wondering why ninety percent?
I went out and spoke with Karen Perry, the principal out there last week, and we ran through her portion of the application, and we wanted to have a goal in place, since that is a, a chunk of the money. And the goal that she previously had there, it really wasn't a measurable objective. And so we talked about the idea that they do the Star for reading and math, all the kids are there, because it's required for them to have a pre and a post-test, if at all possible, before they leave. Because of the fluid nature of the kids being there, sometimes, you know, getting a pre-test and a post-test is difficult in itself. We talked about the idea of going below ninety, because some of these kids, she admitted when they come, school is not first on their mind, they have a lot of other issues that need to be addressed, family, the worry about their adjudication process, some mental health issues, et cetera. But we really felt as, she felt as though ninety was a good number, because she really does feel a lot of the kids do make progress. And so we want to measure that, we want to see where that shakes out when we do the data point at the end of, of next year to see. And hopefully, we'll be able to raise that above ninety. But she was comfortable with that number.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item, Norfolk School Board Scholarship Application Review. Dr. Lisa Corbin was to review that, and Mr. Coleman is here to provide a very brief update, and then we'll move on to the SOL timeline and communication process with Dr. Bailey.
Just briefly, there's ten scholarships, based on the agreement. Those students have all been identified. However, there's still some communication going back and forth between the, the NPS attorney and the ODU attorney, and until that conversation gets to a resolution, we're not at a position where we can share those names at this time. And the, the conflict that is in place right now is determining, you know, is it ten, and does it include renewals, or is it ten new? And so until we get work through that process, we'll have to hold in terms of announcing those names.
No, no, I was just going to say, it'll probably help the board at some point, just to kind of get in writing a little background on, on that scholarship, because I, I, I know it's all kind of confusing.
I have a scholarship, but that was a long time ago.
So, so that would be helpful in the future, if we could, you know, just kind of get a little write-up on the.
Okay. Is that the superintendent's scholarship, or is this a different program?
This is different.
This is different?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Mr. Coleman, will we have that legal machination worked out for us to vote by next week?
We should. You know attorneys as well as I do, I can't answer for them.
I'm working with the ultimate attorney general's office.
Okay.
The issues are turned on the original dean, that these scholarships were created in the process of the city of Norfolk, dean of land to, way to Mary at the time, to put Old Dominion there. And there's a question and an ambiguity as to whether it's ten scholarships, meaning ten plus renewals of four of our scholarships, or it's ten scholarships per year.
Okay.
And we're reviewing the whole documents, trying to come to conclusion on that.
Because when I look at process, we don't technically meet again until early July, these students are going to want to know. And then if we need to technically vote, that wouldn't happen until mid-July, so I'm merely looking at it for the. So I'm merely looking at it for the case of these children.
We want them to know too.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Bailey.
Good afternoon, Dr. Houston, Dr. Thornton, and members of the board. We have a brief update for you on our SOL testing and a draft timeline for SOL-related information. And certainly, if you would like to participate in our testing, we can set you up in one of the computers here around us.
You can actually take the test?
Yeah, no problem. Certainly, the Standards of Learning, in short, SOL assessments are used to evaluate student achievement. We use the content areas of English, Math, Science, and History. And all of this information is used as part of two accountability systems, the Virginia State Accreditation and the NCLB Annual Measurable Objective. Our cycle starts with the summer testing, followed by the fall/winter, followed by the spring, which is where we have the majority of our testing. As of last week, we had about 49,000 tests that we administered. And our testing does close, or the last day of testing is June 12th. New this year was the computer adaptive testing. We call it CAT testing for short. It was for grades six, math-only. And really, the design of this assessment is individualized assessing a student based on how they answered the very first question. And within that bank of questions are high-level, middle, and low-level questions. Our protocol involves monthly meetings with designated assistant principals, who will function as the school test coordinators primarily during the spring of the year. We follow all of these items as we do each administration. Environmental issues, concerns, or things that happen that we cannot anticipate, such as air-conditioned units going down or having intermittent access for wireless. Certainly, you all heard about the cyber attacks of Pearson, which affected the entire state. Normally, what happens is we look at who, what, when, and we resolve those issues. And in most cases, we provide students with another opportunity to test if they're affected. The state accreditation is for grades three through 12, the four major content areas, and for high schools' graduation completion index. These are the benchmarks that we have. You should note that for grade three, we will not have a benchmark or assess grade three science and history. And we do not have any more assessments for grade six and seven history. So those are some of the adjustments. The accreditation levels, there are five of those that our schools can achieve. Certainly, we hope for all of our schools to be fully accredited. But certainly, if they fall short, these are the other levels that they could fall in. Conditionally accredited information will be shared with you in more detail by Dr. Sherrod Williford. Next is the impact of these accreditation levels. You can see that a lot falls into when you're, you receive the designation of accreditation denied. Looking ahead, this is our draft timeline that we have put together based on the timeline that was given to us last year. Normally, this, we are given an update from the state, and as we get that, we will provide an update to you. And certainly, as you work with Dr. Thornton and as data becomes available, we will figure out a way to update you. And this concludes my presentation at this time.
Just one real quick comment. I remember a few years ago when they were rolling in the new math with the technology-enhanced items. We brought in and we performed some of those tests. I'd like to see our general assembly sit down and take the, find out who's smarter than a fifth grader.
Right, yes.
So if I could, Dr. Thornton, in administration, if I just could stress enough, the ability to clearly articulate our scores this year in a timely fashion in an organized rollout. That's one. The other thing I would say is SOLs are not the only measure of the success of a division. So I would suggest that we look at all sorts of measures of success. And we can currently share that data with the community, because it's not all about the SOLs. When we were doing the superintendent evaluation, there was an element called Figure Seven in there, where they provided us with very clear examples of these other measurable successes. Student academic progress, subgroups with other student groupings, college and career readiness, reading and literacy readiness, math readiness, STEM, student progress, student non-academic core activities. So what I would recommend, Dr. Thornton and team, is that while we certainly want the community and everybody to know where we are with SOLs, that's not the full picture of the success of Norfolk Public Schools. So I would stress that we look at a big, broad, sweeping view of the great Norfolk Public Schools.
That we presented that way, that's good.
Yeah, I think we need to present it all in context.
And we've talked about in cabinet on multiple occasions so far, how we're going to frame that narrative. Because each school has its own story and its own successes. So beyond what just the SOLs will tell, we want the SOLs to tell a good story. But there's also another story, several stories that we're going to continue to try to work on. From NPS perspective and the school's perspective, not just what we think the media is going to highlight, but the story that we want to tell.
Absolutely.
A true and accurate story, but one that we can, that we can tell for ourselves better than anyone else can.
And frankly, our students frankly could tell it for us too. So, but I just can't stress the context in which we need to describe the successes of Norfolk Public Schools.
Well, I think there was evidence of that in Sunday's paper. When they finally published the fact that Norfolk Public School, High School students are taking more and more AP tests, are having access to higher rigor, and that Maury, Granby, and Norview were ranked in the top seven in the entire region. Even though that wasn't the focus of the article, they kind of just threw that in as a side note. All they talked about, which was not all, but when they led off with the number of teachers that are now grading the tests. But tests are showing that our students are succeeding. And it's not just at those schools. We see an increased rigor at the, at the rest of the high schools too. And it will filter down as we keep implementing these programs. But we've got to, we've got to frame the narrative. We definitely do. I agree.
Okay, thank you.
2.03, School Leadership Development. Very brief update, Dr. Williford on both of these items. Review of name recommendations for the current Campus Stella K8 school that is under construction, followed by an update on the outline of the process for conditional accreditation as prescribed by the Virginia Department of Education, Dr. Williford.
Good afternoon, Dr. Thornton, Dr. Houston, members of the board. And I wanted to take this opportunity to update you on the naming process and recommendations for Campus Stella K8. Couple of months ago, you received a, we received a written correspondence regarding the naming of Campus Stella K8 school. And that email letter was forwarded to me and the SPMT at Campus Stella for further review, discussion, and discussion. And as a result, we were able to put together a survey for the community to participate in. And we also sent hard copies of the survey home to students. From that process, 36 responses were submitted regarding the naming of the Campus Stella K8 school. Those names were submitted back to the SPMT Naming Committee. And the committee vetted the names. And we are submitting the following three names for your review. And you see the names there, the Southside STEM Academy, STEM School of Excellence, STEM Early Exploration and Development Academy, or CED. In terms of our next steps, we're at the point, following our policy, that we would need to have a public hearing on the committee's recommendations. And then the next step would be to announce the name. So do you have any questions regarding the naming of the new Campus Stella K8?
So typically, with naming architecture, we try to be consistent within a brand. So I'm wondering, was there any consideration given to, by the SPMT or the community members that we be consistent with the naming of some other schools within our division? So for instance, Academy for Discovery at Lakewood. Academy for International Studies at Rosemont. So again, as someone who has experience with brand, I'm always looking at it from that lens in terms of how do we be consistent with our naming architecture as we move forward so that it looks like it's an academy coming from Norfolk Public Schools? And you can have STEM in there somewhere, you can have excellence in there, you can have lots of words. But I would recommend that we look at the naming architecture so that when we start making these changes moving forward, we're very consistent. So I have no commentary on the three personally. But as a board member, and then as my personal career, what I do, that's one of the areas that are focused for me is brand. And as we continue to want to build the Norfolk Public Schools brand, my recommendation is that we just look at the naming architecture for consistency's sake.
Just before you speak, Brad, so I think that's a very good point you make. I'm just wondering, and I'm going to borrow a statement from Dr. Stewart. You don't have to respond. I'm just wondering if that's allowed, given the regulation that guides the policy?
I don't know. But Brad, go ahead.
I like your thought there, Ms. Doyle. I also would offer that we might want to consider making a STEAM academy so that we are articulating the fact that the arts are involved with this. Because that's the trend in STEM education, is science, technology, engineering, as well as the arts and mathematics. Because that create, that connotates that there's, that the, there's a creative side, not just a scientific side. So I would suggest that we at least look at that.
I was going to, I guess, I guess ultimately, the programming will help drive the name. Just over the years, and others who've been around longer than I have can speak to it. It seems like it's been a combination of brand and the use of the word academy. And then in some cases, like with Rosemont, it was an academy, meaning that it was not a full, whatever the terminology, a full structured school.
Comprehensive.
Comprehensive school. So, you know, sometimes people say Ruffner Academy, Chesterfield Academy. Then you have the academies as Ms. Doyle described, then. So I would agree in terms of whatever it is that we're branding and what our definition of academy is, you know, would be something we need to get our arms around. And then, you know, and even with Campus Stella, we kind of talked about this a little bit at the SPMT meeting. You know, the Lakewood School is a school that emerged from a school that was closed. The Campus Stella School is a newly constructed school of a school that exists that we want to try to brand a new program. And so we just have to make sure we're clear, because otherwise, we run into, you know, Richard Bowlin, Ocean View, and Larchmont. Anytime we build a new school that's replacing an existing school, then does this, does this kick in? So we need to consider all of that. But the committee did work hard on the different names in addition to what you received from the Southside Task Force Education Committee. So I guess we'll just proceed down that path. But ultimately, the policy, as I recall it, rests with us. But we are trying to make sure that we get that community input to, you know, be respectful of the names and recommendations that they provided.
So, Dr. Thornton, the administration will take the lead on scheduling that public hearing?
Yes, sir.
So can I follow up? So maybe also, would we like to ask the administration to really come up with criteria of what is a academy in Norfolk Public Schools? What is the definition of, so that we can be consistent moving forward? Again, just part of naming architecture and branding, so that it's, there's no question or surprise if somebody else wants something else, that we know what it is.
To the staff and parents at Madison, you know, they also have asked us several times to make sure that we change that nomenclature as well, Madison Academy, or whatever the phraseology that they came up with.
Right. And you know, and typically, you do embark on a new name when there's a new product or service being offered to the customer. So in this case with Campus Stella, it's a K to eight. Wasn't K to eight before. So, and the programming is different. So I would suggest that that warrants a new name. But again, the product has to be different to warrant a new name. You just can't put a new name on the same product and expect people to view it differently. So I do agree that this should have a new name, because I, in my mind, I see it as a new product, per se. But I think we need to be mindful about when we should allow for a new name or not.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to know if there's a, if we've set up a timeline for completion of this project?
We have not, but time is of the essence. So the idea would be, once we can get the public hearing set at this point, I guess at the earliest, we would look to see if it could be done in August at this point, given that there's a possibility that July is already set for swearing-in and other matters. So the public hearing probably would right now be looking for August. And then perhaps with a final recommendation and action by the board at September meeting.
I'm good with that.
I would maybe want to just check, because I know part of the push from the committee was coming from the PPA and the architects folks who wanted to get that name in place, whatever things that they were going to build, construct, put in place. So, you know, just wanted to check with them as well.
So tentative pending any other construction-related timeline.
Okay.
August 16.
August 16, so, okay.
It would be basically a year, but the construction timeline is something to consider.
Okay. At this time, I would like to go deeper into the accreditation conversation, specifically regarding the conditional accreditation application process. As you're aware, if a school does not meet accreditation requirements for four consecutive years, then that school will have two options. One, to enter into accreditation denied status, or to apply for a conditional accreditation status. And so we're familiar with both, having, we'll have some schools go into accreditation denied last school year and having had schools that were, or a school that was awarded the conditional accreditation. If a school, if we go into a conditional accreditation status with this school, we will enter into agreement with the Virginia Board of Education to reconstitute the school and develop a required conditional agreement plan and attend required quarterly meetings. A good example for us is what we're doing with Todd Water Park and PB Young. If a school enters into accreditation denied status, we, the local division, our U, us, we would enter into a memorandum of understanding. And we're very familiar with that with the Virginia Board of Education. We will have to develop required corrective action plans, which we're familiar with, and attend required quarterly meetings. One of the things we wanted to make clear today is the ideal of reconstitution as an alternative to the memorandum of understanding. Reconstitution can occur in four areas. One of four areas, governance, instructional programming, staffing, and our student population. We speak of governance, we look at changes to school-level management, responsibilities, support for the school leadership. We look at instructional programming, we're talking about changes to the curriculum, component, teaching procedures that are designed and implemented to achieve instructional goals and not necessarily a commercial product. And staffing, changes to staff in the worn areas are a school-wide change in staffing. That reminds me of in the flexibility waiver, when you talk about staffing, you speak of replacing staff, which is like a turnaround model. And then student population just changing. And then student population, just changing the student population served by the school, very similar to what we did at Title Water Park with the reconfiguration. And so all of those qualify, those are some examples of what would qualify for reconstitution. You also received the application, which the process for applying for a conditional accreditation has changed a little in that now there's an application. Years past, there was a letter where you talked about the things that are included now in the application. The application kind of streamlined the process where there are different charts and things that we would populate if we decide to apply for conditional accreditation for schools that qualify for the conditional process. There's also an intent form now that we have to complete if we intend to apply for conditional accreditation. So you have a copy of the application, and this just is a slide that just outlines what's included in case you did not get a chance to see that. We also have a timeframe for this process. It would be up to us to initiate the process. We would have to give our intent by June 26. And so our cabinet, we've been discussing whether or not we should participate in the conditional process if, say, at schools, we have five schools that may be eligible if they do not meet full accreditation this school year. And so if the application, if we decide to apply and the application is approved, then we will go through the process of developing a conditional agreement plan based on essential actions from the academic review. Of course, there'd be quarterly meetings as mentioned previously. And then we will have to reapply for conditional accreditation each year. If a school does not meet the requirements, if you're giving conditional accreditation and after three years it does not meet the requirements of being fully accredited, then the school will revert to accreditation denied.
Questions, comments?
This isn't specifically pertaining to the outline, which I do appreciate, but it goes back to a presentation that we had back in September. And Dr. Thornton, at that time, you were, of course, focused on finances, but this is again talking about goals. And it's from September 10th of 2014, and it's the NPS RSTI goals. And it would be probably beneficial to, at some point in time, go back and look at these goals that we've outlined here, that we've heard a presentation on, to see if we've been able to achieve these goals and see the progress that's been made on those goals.
We've talked about, a few weeks ago as a matter of fact, the need to begin to prepare our end-of-the-year review as we complete the first year of the office and the program. And that's something that his staff has begun to work on. And they'll also, once they finalize it, they'll share it with cabinet. And then what we've talked about is that at some point this summer, we'll share with the board before we start the new school year, to see what lessons learned, how we can improve in going forward.
So just for clarity, what are you asking of the board at this time? If there's a June 26 deadline, we have today's meeting and our June 10th meeting as the last two meetings scheduled. We know we have five schools that we think would be eligible for applying for conditional status. What's the administration saying to the board?
Well, basically, what we wanted to do was to share with the board the process and the timeline around the process. I think last year, when it came to the board, I think the decision from an administrative standpoint had already been made as to which schools we would seek conditional accreditation. So what we wanted to do early on is at least make the board aware of the process and the timeline. We're not asking the board to do anything within the next month. What we will do, leading up to June 26, is to do our own internal review based on the assessment data, key members of cabinet, of course, with Dr. Williford's office as well, to determine what schools that we may think that we have an opportunity to receive conditional accreditation. And based on that, then we will complete the intent form, which only says to DOE that these are the schools that we believe we'll pursue. It does not bind us to make that final application. And once we have determined which of those schools we believe, as the administrative team, we would have an opportunity to receive conditional accreditation, we'd share that with the board in some correspondence, not necessarily in a formal school board meeting.
I guess, just based upon last year, so let's just say we submit the intent, we get the approval, the process begins in September after the school year has already started, and you receive conditional status, and now you're looking at trying to do some type of reconstitution based upon the criteria. It's always seemed to me out of sync. And so that if we, as a district, felt that we were going to pursue conditional accreditation, whether we received it or not, that we would begin to look at it now, just as you all described the challenges that you currently have with Title I and how I qualify folks and all the things that might be involved with that. Obviously, the downside of, should we have a school with the denied status, is perception associated with being in denied status, even though a lot of folks think that it's denied status and somehow it impacts your diploma and all these other kinds of things, which we know is not the case. And some of the schools that we're considering, I mean, it's like Sisyphus in the rock. So it just, I guess, getting a good sense of where you all feel we are performing this year, going back to Ms. Doyle's point around how we're doing, whether it's the official stats from the state or just what we know we have internally. I guess I would just encourage that the sooner we can get our arms around it, the better, so that if we have to make any type of staff changes or budgetary changes, we can do that sooner rather than later. I just think getting to that September, October timeframe is just terrible.
Under their definition, yes.
Right, under their definition, right.
I think we already had the idea or the concept of some grade reconfigurations already in place where we were doing those ideas. But right now, we don't have any specific reconstitution concepts in place.
And we haven't even had a chance yet to see what the results are of the grade configurations from last year. But some of this may tie into when we talk about this equity framework a little bit later on.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Will.
Before we go into the policies, let's take a, but we'll need to be disciplined because our time is tight. Let's take a five-minute break, and we'll be back in five minutes. Thank you.